Walton, do you know anyone about it and what I just said?
Apparently, there's an annual review of your codes through whatever agency that is that goes through the emergency management.
Right.
From my federal flood insurance program, as I understand, I've got a meeting, but as I understand it, there was one review of the code to eliminate this exception.
So that's what we're here to talk about tonight. If anyone has any comments on that subject.
And as a council, we can public legislate it.
Now, I will say that my understanding also is that this change applies only to new construction. It's not saying current structures have to go back and retrofit anything. And the way it's worded is it's for in special flood hazard areas. So it's not the whole town. I don't know if that's things within the 100-year floodlines, that would be my guess, but I don't know that for certain. That's correct. So if you're outside the 100-year floodline, this does apply anyway.
But then it's only new construction.
And it's only new construction even within the 100-year floodline. So.
Can I ask a quick question for public? Does new construction currently build based on that? Basically, that works gotta be, I'm guessing, in added or I don't know where.
Or just elevated somehow. I mean, like some air conditioning units I've seen are up on platforms instead of sitting on the ground outside home. Like mine, my house is like a few inches off the ground, but I'm outside the 100-year floodline, plus I've got new construction.
But this removes the, I can keep my comment for later, but it's either removes anything like furnace plumbing fixtures to be below the lowest floor, so meaning everything from basement has to.
This works for some probably.
I'm sorry, Emily. What this ordinance does is fix something that's wrong with every Delaware ordinance for flood. Previous, this, what this does is it doesn't allow us to let the mechanical equipment be below the freeboard that we have for us to get the freeboard credit. In other words, if we don't pass this ordinance, nobody's gonna get a credit for freeboard, and so all flood insurance. And that's, that's all it says. This was code for flying. And every city in, every city in Delaware, what against what the state, exactly what the state model ordinance was. The insurance company, insurance company could change that definition to be that all the mechanical equipment should also be elevated up extra, of freeboard that we have, ours put in half. So, so that they can get the flood insurance discount. And if we don't change this ordinance, we're essentially back to where we started.
But is the new construction already doing that?
This means for new construction.
But is the current new construction, so that there's a house building on Third Street, right?
Yes, it's all made right here now. This is gonna say that we can't rent the bearings. Because it'd be as simple that area bearings right next to lower the, the, the flood, I mean, mechanical movement down below base flood elevation. We, we don't, we don't do that in the, in this situation.
I just wanted to make sure that.
Nothing has to change from what's there, but all new, new stuff has to be elevated.
Thank you.
So any public comment on this? Okay, so we still have to wait till seven for the regular meeting. Well, if you think of something, somebody else may come in.
Make me feel young. I probably eighty-two.
Do you know Washington Park?
Oh, of course.
Before that, it's Pennside.
That I haven't heard.
Pennside, there were three, Pennside, No-Side, and Shipside.
Know what?
And they were helping second wall work with the government workers in the airbase and the shipyards. And No-Side, Blackwoods, and Pennside.
Ain't talking history, everybody.
When they tore down, it was fifty-three. So they, people had to get out.
Right.
After four, they went public. And then after fifty-three, they started, Pennside, everybody had to move. So my family's who passed the hood. And that's where it grew.
The castle was too. And Dallas built the blue collar workers back in the day for all of them.
When I was at Pennside, it's got a field.
Shaw.
And the same with Shawtown.
Shaw, yeah, Shawtown, Dallas, still Washington, all scrapped. Back when you were allowed to.
Then, ten years later, we were getting your girls going out of state. More fun with the girls.
No doubt. Yeah, I remember being young, barely.
Speaking of seven o'clock, is there a motion to adjourn this public hearing? Second? A favor?
Aye.
Can public hearing be adjourned? Now, the jury needs a moment to change the equipment, to reset one separate, because it's a separate meeting.
I'm ready.
Okay, thank you. All right, I call this regular meeting of City Council to order. We'll begin with.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Council President Suzanne Sauter here. Councilperson Joseph J.
Here.
Councilperson Nerma Zubaka.
Here.
Councilperson Andrew Dels.
Here.
Councilperson Brian Nada.
Here.
Also present, Mayor Valerie Deary, City Administrator Antonia, Antonina Tantillo, City Treasurer James Wismann, Chief of Police Richard McKay, Lieutenant General Jeffrey Burkstrom, City Sister Max Walton, and City Planner, Chris Dorff.
Thank you. Okay, the first item is the minutes from the January thirteenth public hearing. Are there any corrections to those minutes?
Council President, we have one.
Okay.
In respect to page nine of the minutes from March twelfth.
Okay, wait, we still want to have a break here too.
Oh, okay.
We'll come to, we'll come to that one in a moment. Any corrections to the January thirteenth public hearing? Okay, is there a motion to approve the minutes as submitted?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The minutes are approved. And now we'll do the minutes of our last regular meeting on March twelfth. Is that a way to have a correction?
Yes, thank you, Council President. In respect to the City Council regular meeting dated March twelfth, twenty twenty-four, on page nine, under the category of a motion to approve ordinance five four three in respect to marijuana, third paragraph, um, second sentence, it says, in reference to Council Madaway. I mean, he expresses opinion that what was cracked is failed. That was not my summation. I indicated that some component of the, of the law, uh, uh, seemed failed specifically in respect to the decriminalization of marijuana. But as written, um, I enumerated extensively that I do not believe that the law is a good law and is bad.
Now, you're referring to the Delaware law not to outwardness, is that correct?
Yes, yes, that's correct.
So how would you like this to be corrected? Because I think it also needs to be made clear that you critique this of the Delaware law not outwardness.
Yes, I agree.
Mr. Walton, would you permit it to just let in the air those hearing corrections, or do we have to vote on the order tonight?
You can postpone it until we email the correction and you work it out. It's gotta be, it's in the tape, right?
Do you wanna do it that way, rather than try to make the correction on?
Yeah, I, I actually would.
Or could we just strike?
Yeah, I would find it to instruct him.
So we could, okay. So if we strike that sentence, then you think it's inaccurate, so you.
Yes, yes.
Okay, um, is there, so you're making a motion to strike that. Do we have to do motion? All right, motion to strike that sentence. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So we will strike that sentence. Well, I have one more minor correction. On the next page, page ten, the next of the last paragraph that begins during discussion of strategies, it kind of ends with an incomplete sentence, and I think perhaps the word of doesn't belong, and then we could just put a period after details, because it says, "Council will discuss the details of the information to be included in the annual reports, and Councilperson Madaway will work with, or the commission chairs to work out the details." And then it says of.
Probably reporting over forty.
Yeah, I'm sure. So if we, I move that we strike the word of and put a period after details.
Second.
Any other? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. So any other corrections to the minutes? Is there a motion to approve the minutes as corrected?
Motion approved.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the minutes are approved, thank you. Okay, um, Mr. Wismann?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, we're not, sorry, we do the staff reports, beginning with the treasurer's report. Mr. Wismann?
That's me, all right. Very briefly, I, since I just recently came on as treasurer, um, I went back and I looked at the city budget and saw some things I wanted to just mention. And then also the current treasurer's report, which was prepared for me, I wanted to tie that in. The city tre, the city budget ends June thirtieth. So right now, with March thirtieth, March thirty-first, we're three quarters of the way through the year, nine months. So as of March thirty-first, uh, our total budget revenues, five million, seven hundred and four thousand, and we've collected substantially all of that. There's a few entries that have to be made with some inter funds, but for the most part, we've collected our five million dollars for the current fiscal year. On the other side of the ledger, the expenses, if you think of the expenses as being fairly constant month to month to month, we've put out about four million, five hundred thousand dollars, which is approximately seventy-five percent of the expenses we've incurred. So the budget's on target, and I don't expect that, based on the types of revenues we have, that we're gonna have a lot more revenues. There's gonna be some inter fund. So I just wanted to mention that at this point in time, we've collected all of our revenues, and our expenses are right on target for what they're incurred for. With that said, we have a fund of cash accounts at the end of March of eleven million, seven hundred and fourteen thousand dollars, and that's made up of unrestricted funds of nine million, four hundred and ninety-one thousand, and two million, and the two million, two twenty-three difference are restricted funds. So you can see that we're financially healthy. We've got enough cash, if we had a severe problem, to survive without any raising of revenues. So that's pretty much my report, that we're in good stead.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the treasurer's report subject to all?
So, Lou?
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So staff reports, um, I'm very pleased to say that this is probably my last administrative report, because we have a city administrator, which I'll get to in a moment, but these are the items that I have. The paving, if you've driven out this, out Delaware Street, you've noticed probably that the paving at the intersection at Sixth and Delaware is complete. The other, another thing that I wanted to mention is, um, we've been talking about our project with students at the University of Delaware to add more information about pending building projects in the city to the website, and that continues. They've nearly completed the design, and we're giving them the data from the various projects to load. This will include things like minutes from relevant meetings, various reports, site plans, et cetera. So their semester ends in a few weeks, in early May, so we hope to have this completed by then, and once it is, you know, we'll let you know, and then you can go check it out.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
On that matter, are they creating like a procedure for our staff to be able to keep it up?
Yes, part of the arrangement is that they will create a manual, they will conduct training for the staff, and they will create a manual for the staff to use. So. And last month, when we were discussing the parking ordinance, Mr. Zubaka asked if our two large apartment complexes, or larger ones, the Garrison and Dewar's Landing, would provide data about the number of residents that they each had and the number of registered vehicles, if they kept such data. Now, in terms, they are not required to collect this data, nor are they required to give it to us, but I figured I'd ask. Unfortunately, neither of them answered, so I don't have any, any figures to give you, but I did want you to know that I tried. An important one that people need to pay attention to is street sweeping resumes next month for the summer and into the fall. It, each neighborhood has a, or each block has a particular day of the, that it's going to be clean. It's once a month. Where in the, our public works department is in the process of putting up signs to tell you what day is, you know, the third Wednesday or the fourth Thursday, or whichever is your day, your neighborhood to be clean. We're hoping that people will cooperate by moving their cars at that time, so that, two reasons for the street sweeping, number one, it makes the city look better to keep it clean, and secondly, if we clean up that stuff, it doesn't wash into the storm drains and clog them up, and, or potentially ultimately get into the river, and it's part of our, um, what we're required to do through DENRECK to help to keep things out of the river that don't belong there. So pay attention when the, the signs are going up, they're not all up yet, public works is still in the process. And we appreciate everyone's cooperation. You all know that our former code enforcement officer retired, um, the position's been advertised, we've received some applications, and Ms. Tantillo will be talking about that in a moment. Speaking of her, I am pleased to introduce Antonina Tantillo, who is our new city administrator. She. She comes to us after four years with the town of Townsend. She has a master's degree in public administration from the University of Delaware, where she also earned her bachelor's degree in public policy and political science. As part of her graduate study, she was a local government management fellow in the towns of Milton and Fenwick Island. She also served as an urban policy fellow for the Wilmington City Council. In addition to this experience in local government, Ms. Tantillo also worked for various nonprofits, such as Cap of Charities and Trust Center for Theological Studies and the Center for Community Research and Service. Ms. Tantillo is originally from New York, but she spent a good part of her growing up years in Kent County, Delaware. So this is the beginning of her third week with us, and we're very pleased to have her, and she has some things to report.
Thank you, everyone. I'm happy to be here. I'm looking forward to working with each of you. I've been busy these past couple weeks, meeting with council, of the stakeholders in our community. I do have a couple of quick updates. Number one is that Delmarva is continuing, um, their project, in the final phase of their project for the gas main renewables, and this will continue on Third and Fourth Streets. In the future, likely in the fall, residents whose gas mains were renewed will be contacted as they reach out to determine which screens you would like to cover these gas mains. We are also entering into budget season, um, so staff and council will be working on that. Sure workshops will be held to, uh, for our municipal budget. And finally, as President Sauter alluded to, we are working on hiring for our according former state officer. We received numerous applications, and we've gone through first rounds of applicant, um, interviews, and I'll be completing second round of interviews, uh, coming into next week. That is my report.
Okay, thank you. And I'll just add to the Delmarva report that since my street is one of the ones in the new phase, in this phase, we had our appointment with them today.
Very good.
So they come once, very briefly, like fifteen minutes, they look at your house, where's your gas meter? You know, how close are you to the neighbors? Where can you put this, um, external emergency shut-off that's required? So they were very pleasant, polite, they arrived when they said they were going to, and they explained the whole process to us and what to expect going forward, so others should expect the same.
Absolutely, thank you.
Can I ask a question for, um, so, thank you, Antonina. Of course, it's a pleasure to have you and to Council President. I just wanna bring up the issue of respect to Delmarva, because I've, uh, heard it, um, at the planning, uh, commission meeting and a couple other, uh, ancillary, uh, city subgroup meetings, but then also around town. There is a concern from some residents in respect to Delmarva, and, um, their professionalism, customer service aspects, and, uh, in respect to the placement of, um, uh, this box material, et cetera. So if we can, um, reengage them, uh, to make sure we are working and partnering with residents, and, um, I think that would be beneficial. And I'm sure there may be some residents in the, in the crowd who could speak to some personal experiences, and I certainly am willing to give some of that feedback and share it with you.
Yeah.
That is something that I did hear.
Right, well, actually, the, the man, there were two people there. The man who's sort of coordinating everything, and then the actual person from Delmarva who will be doing the installation. And the gentleman who's the coordinator said that he had gotten an extensive email with a list of questions from a member of the planning commission, and he had provided the answers to those questions. So hopefully, we can get the information out there. The things about the shields, I think, maybe didn't get out as well as it should have in the earlier phases of the process, and I told you that, so I'm hoping that, you know, they'll deal with everybody together at the end in terms of that.
I did meet with them last week, um, to talk about making sure that we are in direct communication, and I'll make sure that they communicate with our office and that we share that to our website, so that residents are aware and aware that they will, they will be. And if anyone has concerns about, you know, um, pressure, when someone, you know, reaches out to me, and I'll make sure that we address that.
Yes.
So I, and I did meet with the city administrator on Friday, and one point that I brought up with, in addition to some of what Brian brought up, was, uh, it doesn't seem like there's, um, that we're clear on the process that Delmarva has to take, whether they go through hack, whether it's a level one, and I just wanna make sure that that gets clarified. Please.
Okay. Mr. Burkstrom, did you have anything to report?
Nothing other than a report.
Okay, thank you. And Chief McKay?
Good evening. Uh, this will be brief, certainly a lot less brief than last meeting. I did wanna touch base with, uh, on Council President's comments on the street sweeping. I did get some questions from council about, uh, some, some language concerns with the signs, so, before, and, and there was concern over enforcement. Before we even consider enforcement action, we are gonna wait till all the signs are installed. Then we're gonna do an evaluation to make sure that they're properly placed, that the language is enforceable. And then there'll be, and I'll leave this up to council, uh, there'll be a, a warning period. Could be thirty, sixty days, whatever you're comfortable with. Uh, we started this back before COVID, and the, uh, the warning was basically a letter that we had copied that outlined what the statute was that covered any parking violations. It's basically parked where signs prohibited. And then we told them, basically, you've got thirty days, this is something you probably wanna get used to doing. So, uh, we're more than willing to do that again and give people a chance to get used to this, because it is, it is a big change. So wanted to address that. Uh, I wanted to follow up to some requests again, um, uh, I have a request in there to get some more information about specific statistics related to apartment complaints. So I, I made the request, I didn't follow up, but I, I had a note to, to check back with you, so that you didn't think that we, uh, you know, we weren't still looking into that. Uh, I wanna take a minute to, to publicly acknowledge and thank, uh, Chief Mieske and his, uh, his, uh, fire department for stepping up. department for stepping up. As you know, for years, we've worked with Del Dot to try to address the flooding on Route Nine. When I say address for us, it's just a matter of getting the road closed in time before cars get stuck, and then, and then the fire department makes the responses. And it's been challenging, because Del Dot, they handled a lot of roads that they have to close. So, we recently were able to obtain a trailer with a significant amount of equipment, that it gives us the ability to close the road. We ran into some logistical issues getting that done, so prior to giving it back, the fire department stepped up, and we're working together tentatively to do this. In some cases, they may advance stage some of this equipment, and then if they start to see that there's an issue, they can, they can pull the barricades and close roads themselves. I know it's, there's been some question about why are we doing this for a state maintained road, and I, I recognize to some level the question, but the reality is, these are our residents that are affected by this flooding. And if we don't get these roads closed faster than, than they've been closed, then we run the risk of people getting stuck and, and seriously hurt in this water. The Route Nine water was, was really high last time out. I mean, I think we had to close for close to three or four days, so. And the ferry cutoff water is also very dangerous. So, it, it benefits everybody, it keeps the fire department. I think there was one time, in the last few years, they, they made nine or ten rescues in, in about a four or five hour period. So, it makes sense that we do this, and since, you know, we work well together, we've got no issues with this, and I, I hope council will take notice of that. I was also given a, a question about how many times have we closed Route Nine in the last year? So, starting from April of twenty-three to April of twenty-four, Route Nine has been closed nine times. Of those nine times, we've had to close ferry cutoff three. I can tell you that my twenties, whatever many years now, experience, that's probably the most I've closed in a year, ever. And, and nine in one year, I, I could probably say in the first ten years of my career, I've been closed nine times. So, we're definitely seeing some issues. We've addressed this with our new city administrator, and we're talking about maybe some advanced warning options that Del Dot hopefully would help fund with some, 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 a trigger at, at the low points that would activate signs in the outreach areas. Nine Hamburg, nine Federal, nine Moors, one seventy, two seventy-three, one forty-one, signs that light up that say, road closed, high, you know, due to flooding. So we're looking at those options, at, at least to be able to manage it when it's closed. And then the only other significant incident that we dealt with this month, that I thought was newsworthy, was, we worked with multiple agencies in Newcastle County to deal with a, a growing concern with speed exhibition, and these unsanctioned car meets. Hundreds and hundreds of folks go to these things, they, they race their cars, they've got unregistered OHVs. Several months ago, there was one that started, actually in our jurisdiction, in Center Point, we chased them out. About an hour later, they were somewhere else, and, and there was a shooting that led to a homicide. So, this isn't, this isn't, these aren't fun, these are, these are dangerous folks, and we're doing our best to kind of keep, to work with other agencies. We've worked recently, I think it was the first week in, first week in March, with, with multiple agencies, and our, our officers helped, all funded by violent crime funds, and our officers made a, an arrest of a car going a hundred and five miles an hour with, with a child in it. I know other agencies made multiple arrests that led to gun possession charges and drug charges. So, again, when we see these things stand up, the, the absolute best thing to do is to call nine one one. If you use the word unsanctioned car, we'll know exactly what it means, but if you could just say it's a, a, a large group of cars that are acting disorderly, it will, it will trigger a pretty significant response. So, you know, we obviously welcome any help we can get from the, from the public. That's all I have. All right, good job.
Chief, can I just ask you a quick question?
Sorry, sir.
Thank you for pulling the numbers on closures in the last twelve months. Do you have no idea how we compare to the rest of the state to some of the other flooding towns, and then how would we go about trying to get that information? Just so we're, as we're talking to Del Dot about part of some of these projects, you know, like, so we can voice our concern about, listen, this is the, you know, where we stand, this is some of the reasons why we're, you know, trying to urge for, for these changes.
So I, I think if I were to reach out to TNC, I could probably get a number that could, they could probably, I'm sure they have that.
And that wouldn't be a, you know, out, out of order request for you to make?
No, no, not at all. I mean, I think, yeah, I think it makes sense, especially since, you know, they were willing, I think they recognized that we may be an anomaly, you know, that they were so willing to give us the supply. So, I, I'm totally speculating there, but, yeah, I could, I'd be glad to do that.
If you're one of mine, that would be great to take.
And then, and I know, I actually talked to the city administrator about this as well, I think she's got the same context that we have with, with engineers with Del Dot, that we could probably reach out and say, hey, we'll give you a helping stuff.
Had you ever closed ferry cutoff before, other than like a hurricane or something?
Floyd, in nineteen ninety-eight.
It just seems like it happens a lot more. I know we've had a lot of rain, but it does seem like it really doesn't ever completely dry out or dry out.
Yeah. No, there was a long stretch where we didn't, we didn't have to do that. So this year was three years, I think we did one maybe last year, but.
So thanks again for your efforts and the combination effort of the Goodwill Fire Company to keep everyone safe. Thank you for tracking the numbers, because that's good data that we can use and leverage to tell our story. But at the same time, it's a complete story, because those are nine times and three times for those that were closed, but there's been other times in which the water has been saturated and just didn't close it because it didn't reach certain levels. So this definitely is an issue that we as a collective group, city, have to monitor and, and work towards a resolution on. Then secondly, I would like to say thank you to you and to your operations chief and sergeant, community members. We had a resident who reached out specifically around Sixth Street, and Sixth Street, and people going through stop signs, not obeying, you know, traffic laws, and people who weren't safe. And I want you to know that you have a chief who heard that feedback, who responded to that feedback, who put people on the case, and they immediately took some action. So I want to thank you today, and I want to say a public.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Council Communications, Mr. Deck?
Sure. Just a few things. I did meet with the contractor last Friday morning, Senior Center, to discuss the installation of the AB equipment. Bobby Thatcher, representing the Senior Center, was also here. We need to get some electrical work done here, so that we can have the equipment installed, but we are moving forward on that. As I said earlier, I met with the new city administrator on Friday, we had a great meeting, just to kind of get to know each other and, and talk about issues within the city. The old Newcastle litter crew had another event this past Sunday, from three to five. We had seventeen volunteers, we collected eleven bags of trash, and multiple tires and other debris. So we worked on Wilmington Road, and we worked on Gleeve Lane, big success. Our volunteer numbers were down, but we were competing with the, the women's basketball finals, so I can understand why they were down. The only other thing I'll say is, the chief brought up the issues, and I think in the next couple meetings, I want to look for an ordinance to push Del Dot to fund the two intersections in our transportation plan, which would be Seventh and Washington and Sixth and Trestnut. But I think we also need to follow up, and I appreciate the, the mayor followed up before, with the plans for Route Nine south of Davinsville. We've been hearing that they were, you know, want to do an experimental, new material on that, but I haven't heard anything, and I will follow up with that. And again, you know, the ferry cutoff is, seems to be flooding more and more. It doesn't sound like that there's a long-term solution for that, so I do think that we need to address those issues. Again, I'll, I'll be following up for an ordinance to our state representative and senator to push that. That's all, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Sauter?
Just quick on the dog park for the design, we did have some information back from legal, so we need to review that. Once we get that done, I'll hopefully get that out for an RFP in the near future.
Thank you. Ms. Ellen?
Joe, thank you for mentioning, you know, the flooding in different zones of, of our community. I agree, it's time for some action, and I would also say it's time for a unified letter to be written by, by people, administration, and or council, to our representatives in Dover on this particular issue. Since the last council meeting, I had the pleasure of participating in a career day at George Reed Middle School. I also attended the March Delaware League of Local Government in Dover, on behalf of the city, with the mayor, council president, Chief McCabe, our new city administrator. And unexpectedly, while I'm in the meeting, it was a very informative meeting, I had several people who came up to me, this was their first time meeting, from other different cities and municipalities, who said, you all in the city of Newcastle have a great representative in respect to Chief McCabe, you all have a great new city administrator in respect to Antonina. And I was kind of taken back by it, but also was very excited and, and happy to hear that. So, fellow residents, I want you to know that the professionals that we have working with us on a day-to-day basis are not just respected purely locally, but they are respected throughout the state. And, and that's something that we should be happy about, because every municipality can't say that.
Thank you.
In respect to, there's some upcoming community-centric events that I'd like to highlight. April the twentieth, the Sailing Club is doing a beach cleanup. Friday, April the twenty-sixth, there's a student art showcase at the William Penn High School, from five PM to seven PM. On Friday, the Pen Bistro Cafe will be open that evening. Saturday, the student art showcase at William Penn High School will go from ten AM to noon. Saturday, May the fourth, excuse me, Friday, May the third, and Saturday, May the fourth, we have our May Market. This is a great community event that's been going on for generations. Please come out, show support, volunteers are needed. Saturday, May the fourth, there is a free children's tennis clinic, here at the tennis courts across the street, ages five and up, no racket, for experiences required. Saturday, June the first, the city, in combination with the Goodwill Fire Company, and anybody and everybody will be doing a blood drive from nine AM to two PM with the Delaware Blood Bank of Delmarva. And then finally, I would like to acknowledge the, the life, the work, and death of two giants in our community. Mr. Edgar Niggy, who was raising this community, who chose to stay and work here, and many years on the fire department. And then finally, Mr. Pachek, he stood out for many reasons, because of his stature, because of his heart, and for being a lion's lion here in the city of Newcastle. I'd like to commend Ms. Jung Pachek for the love and support and strength that she showed in support of her husband during his extensive illness. Our prayers and thoughts are with you all. Thank you, council president.
Okay, thank you. And then, Mr. Zabaka?
Good evening, everybody. I did say in last meeting I wouldn't be here, due to observation of Eve, but actually, due to solar eclipse. I hope most of you were able to observe yesterday, the sighting of moon wasn't possible until tonight, so the Eve has been moved one day for tomorrow. So, I'm, I'm here. I wanted to thank everybody for organizing Easter festivities on Saturday and Sunday, and we had several accounts and contests. I wasn't able to attend the city of Newcastle, I was with my American mom, and, you know, at their church, enjoying stuff with, with our kiddos, so we decided to, to be there instead. It's always kind of torn apart when you got something running out of Newcastle versus, you know, trying to hang out with family too, especially on holidays. And thank you, Joe, for bringing up the, the Del Dot resolution. I think it's absolutely timely and needed. I know you were waiting until Antonina joins or somebody as a city admin, for that to happen, so that we can pursue this. I, I want to just mention that on coming up Monday, I believe, a planning chair, mayor, myself, city administrator, police chief, are meeting with Del Dot. We just found out about this Del Dot study that was conducted for the Fort Twenty-Seven West Seventh Street complex, that got a basically rating D, and we were just confused how it was that, you know, and then Del Dot was saying that was okay, and I was just like, everybody in the room was like, what do you mean? That's, it's okay, a D don't sound okay. And the traffic numbers, when we got the report, were actually from September of twenty-twenty-one, so I was, I was questioning the numbers due to it being still state emergency, you know, people working from home at higher rates at the time, the pandemic. So I was trying, so we're going to see if Del Dot can revise the study with newer numbers to see what are the late numbers, and, you know, due to traffic and all the other aspects of, that they go into traffic study. So, and hopefully, we, we learned something in a Monday meeting that was maybe overlooked, but, but anyways, just, just something that we can share more next meeting. I have mentioned I would look at census data in last meeting, so I'm just going to share briefly that I have looked at fifteen years' worth of data since two thousand and ten, basically. And I was, I was helping provide some numbers for some of the grants that went out for playground in a town, which basically showed that children population, ages of zero to seventeen, we had about, you know, one thousand two hundred and fifty kids, something like that, in the whole city, based on twenty-ten census, and that number was about the same twelve, fifty-four in twenty-twenty-two census. And then, total population in twenty-twenty-two was seven thousand one hundred eighty-seven. So, I know that we've been throwing around fifty-five-hundred number around, so I thought it would be good if we start updating that number across website and web roles, we use that to seven-one-eight-seven, for the time being, until we get a new census in. I did conduct this analysis on my own, and I used the, the smallest census geographical unit. And I'm so sorry, guys, for boring you guys with this, but I just want to make sure that everybody understands this, this was narrowed down to only those neighborhoods belonging to Newcastle. So this is comparative data, and only includes all those neighborhoods that are part of our city, so it wasn't, you know, I was able to break down by census, you know, block, group, which is the smallest unit there. And I think that's all I have for you guys, and if I forgot something, I'll, I'll mention it next time.
Thanks, Mr. President. One other thing, I apologize. This past Saturday, I had the joy of attending the opening day for the Newcastle Lillie. It was a little cold that day, but the kids were excited, the families were there and present. And I just want to encourage everybody in our community, now that the weather's starting to break, to take a trip up to Lillie. Whether or not you have a child, or a grandchild, or know anyone there, your presence in the eyes of the children mean a lot. And you'll have some fun, and you'll probably harken back to the days when you were a kid. So, thank you.
All right, thank you.
If I, if I just can add to mine, to anybody who's observing, I'll have to eat you guys tomorrow, so that's all for me.
Okay. Business from the bay.
Well, today was one of our first beautiful days outside, and I hope people were able to get outside. We've been overly blessed with an abundance of April showers. A little depressing sometimes on those dark dreary days, but April showers, we've heard it, bring May flowers. And then that also means May Market, which was mentioned by councilperson Madoe. So I'd like to recognize Arasafa and the ever-popular May Market. That will open on Friday, May third, at ten AM, and then it will close on Saturday at three PM. If you've experienced May Market before, you know things sell out quickly. Do not dawdle. If you can't get there on Friday, send someone in your stead, tell them what you want, because by Saturday, it may not be there. So. So, you know, that's always a great event for us to decorate. And with that said, this is the appropriate place to read the Arbor Day proclamation since we're talking about greens and plants. So this is Arbor Day proclamation commemorating the anniversary of Arbor Day and proclaiming April 26, 2024, as Arbor Day in the city of Newcastle. Whereas in 1872, at the suggestion of J. Sterling Morton, the Nebraska Board of Agriculture, established a special day to be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed on April 10, 1872, with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can be a solution to combating climate change by reducing erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cutting heating and cooling costs, moderating the temperature, cleaning the air, producing life-giving oxygen, and providing habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, I, Valerie Leary, Mayor of the City of Newcastle, Delaware, dare do hereby proclaim April 26, 2024, as Arbor Day in the city of Newcastle, Delaware, and I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and support the efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. And with that goes thanks to our Tree Commission, who plants trees everywhere, and we have to give them kudos, and to Mr. Vukulich and his team, who often fixes and resets the brick around the trees, which is no small feat amongst them. It was my pleasure to meet our new city administrator, Antonina Tantillo, on her first day, as well as join her, the Council President, and Council President Madoway, and the chief at the Delaware League of Local Governments later in that same week. And the Easter parade was just adorable. If you can't get out there on Sunday afternoons, you really should. The kids, from infants in arms to adults, and perhaps next year, the mayor and council can enter as a group and maybe get with something there. This week is Library Appreciation Week. And on behalf of the city council, I want to recognize Julie Kirk and her staff at the library. While the library's focus, everyone thinks of as generally books, there's so much more with their programming and computer access and meeting rooms, and it goes on and on. Take the time to stop in and visit them. Also, I'd like to recognize the Newcastle Library friends who work to support the library through book sales and other events. On Thursday, I will be a guest at the White House for a program entitled Communities in Action: Building a Better America. Should I have the opportunity, my two primary initiatives that I'll be speaking about will be our coastal flooding and law enforcement recruitment. And I have been in contact with the chief regarding a conversation on that, so I can take points with me. However, on the same day, the Sheriff's House preview, that's the 11th, 3:00 to 5:00 p.m., be sure that's for the residents preview, be sure to go. I will look forward to all of your pictures. The other day at work, I had someone who recognized that I was a mayor here say, "Oh, it might be nice to have two incomes." I said, "Yeah, that $133.21 goes a long way every two weeks. These folks sitting at the table right here make less than that. This job is not a career job. We do it for love and service." And in the city of Newcastle, our nonprofits are many, and we rely heavily on them. Newcastle Historic Society, Arasafa, Newcastle Library of Friends, the Newcastle Community Partnership, the Lions, the J.C.s, our churches, and others are key in organizing and running our events. And they are all volunteers. Our commissions, Planning Historic Area Commission, Board of Health, Tree Commission, and I know I'm leaving some out, they are also staffed by volunteers. The trustees work for an ear of corn, slightly more than the other volunteers. Not everyone has the time and interest to volunteer. But for those who give to the city of their time and attention, we should all be very grateful. If we tried to pay only half of those people, we would have a huge budgetary issue on our hands. Sometimes conflicts of interest may be perceived if someone serves on more than one group, which is not unusual. They may serve on the Lions, the J.C.s, the Historic Society. It's not unusual. That's going to happen in a city of our size. And we should make sure that we do not throw out accusations of somebody's making money off of something or someone's putting money in their back pocket, because I can assure you, I am still working as a paramedic. I don't have a new car. I don't have a second house. And probably neither do most of everybody else in this room who does volunteer. So keep in mind, we do this out of love and out of service to our city. And we should be extraordinarily grateful to each and every person. Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have a report from our Alvis Coordinator, Mr. Reeves.
So first of all, I wanted to thank everybody for the opportunity to work on this project and to contribute in this way to what is really a fascinating challenge, which is to celebrate historic Newcastle and our community and to reach out to different communities around us, both near and far, and sort of, and make sure that more people appreciate and understand and enjoy and contribute to our town in return. So we're, and also thank you for the opportunity to present today. So we're one month into a four-month project, right? Because there's only four months left in that contract, and we're sort of one month into that. So we tried to hit the ground running on March 1st, and we also kind of decided to make it a team effort. So, you know, we didn't think it was, we wouldn't be able to get as much done with one person. So Fee Price and I have been working together very closely, and we're also bringing other people into the effort as well. And always open to people sort of helping contribute or coming up to us and making suggestions or working on things as well. So we really think it needs to be a team effort with lots of collaborative projects. We wanted, because of that, you know, kind of four-month kind of span in there, one of the challenges was to figure out whether to do, focus on the long-term capacity building and planning and, you know, strategies, or to focus on near-term results. Let's get something done this week. Let's put something out. Let's see if we can help with an existing events and so forth. So we thought in the end that we needed to really just balance those two things, because if we, if we, if we don't, if we just do the long-term strategy and long-term planning and whatever, then nobody will see anything is happening, right? Nobody will see any results of that. And also, we won't learn much about what's possible to have to do in this town, what really works, what really everybody in town, what would be synergistic. So we've tried to balance those two things. We, so we have, and we're, so we've sort of focused in five key areas. And we've done, we've kind of documented everything on this. We got a little enthusiastic about developing the report, so we didn't get it in on time, but you know, it'll be in your email. And also, all the other things we mentioned in terms of strategies or meetings and whether we have notes on everything and so forth, we're absolutely willing to share with anybody about that. So five key areas, including?
Yeah. So one of the first things we did was we identified groups and individuals within our town locally. We went a little further afield with other neighboring communities, and we started setting up a bunch of meetings. So we met with local organizations like the Partnership, the Historical Society, the National Park Service, and then we went a little further afield. We met with the Tall Ship Foundation. We met with the Wilmington Visitors Bureau, Delaware TV, and then we met with the new sales director up at the Courtyard by Marriott on Route 9.
And so we're also spending, talking to businesses as well and, you know, and other people in town who we think of as sort of event creators or event sponsors, you know, or people who are, really have some kind of stake in, in sort of getting, getting audiences, getting people to Newcastle. So about 20 different things this month, and probably we'll continue to go forward. And again, we have notes for those meetings, 20 or so. Then we wanted to start designing some specific strategies about how to move forward in different, specific, like communication strategies. You know, we wanted a strategy for web presence. We wanted a strategy for social media. We wanted a strategy for distributing print assets, you know, brochures and guides and so forth, so that, so that we know what locations they would be in. So we've been talking to businesses about, about where, where to put, you know, so each business has, has print assets on the other businesses. Each museum has assets to describe the other businesses. And then outside of town, at hotels and, you know, kind of tourist bureaus and so forth, there's also assets about Newcastle in the works. We, we're looking at a shared event calendar online so that each event creator, organization, from the library to the courthouse, can put their events online, you know, kind of, and then we can use that as a database to develop daily calendars, weekly calendars, monthly calendars, and then feed those into not only our website, but potentially the other people who, you know, kind of helped, helped publicize things happening in Newcastle. We looked at, we also sort of looked at event spaces in town and thought, well, we actually have a lot of spaces in town to do events, but it's hard to figure out what's available. You know, if you wanted to do an event, you know, is there, is there space for 50 people to do a class or to do a small performance or whatever? So we've started to do, Fee's been working on this particularly, we've started to do kind of a list of event venues and spaces, the specifications on them, a profile on each of them. So if you want to do something in town, you want to create something, create some buzz, create something happening, you know, here's a start, here's where you could find an appropriate space for it. And, and we're looking at hospitality packages. So one of the conversations with Marriott, you know, with the people at Terry House is like, what if you booked a, booked a room or booked a block of rooms with your group, your wedding, or your corporate event, and you could then package that with activities in town, either, you know, either eating at a restaurant or going to a museum or developing some kind of event in combination with, you know, with the hospitality packages. So, and then we're looking at brand themes. So if we want to enhance the brand story, what I call the brand story, the marketing of the brand story of Newcastle, what, what would, how would that enhance it? We've got historical stuff, that's, we got that down pat, but it'd be nice to add some family-friendly stuff, add some other kind of activities, tall ships, you know, bicycling, the arts and culture, arts basically, you know, and so forth. We'd like to add some, kind of flesh out the brand story of Newcastle. Why would you want to come besides just to go to the museum, basically? Why would you want to come and stay all day, bring your family, and then, you know, and then shop and eat and sort of patronize the different spaces? So, so that's, and then we also started to collect research about, about tourism or about related to tourism in the town. So we started off with some qualitative audience data, talking to people about who comes to your museum or who comes to your shop, you know? Sometimes we have a specific list, sometimes it's anecdotal qualitative information. We started to look at audience segmentation. It's great to say, "Oh, we want more people in town." Well, what kind of people do you want, right? And what are the different groups or what I think of as visitor communities in town that, that do different things, right? So some people, you know, eat at restaurants, some people go to events, some people visit the parks, some people visit, you know, go on tours. We were just talking to Mike Connolly, you know, and he has a specific kind of person that takes a tour, right? You know? And so, so that's again, one type of activity in town, but what are the other communities, visitor communities, and what are the, how do they match with the other activities? And then we also, in long term, want to look for, where do we get really quantitative information? You know, are there some tools we can get to attract? How many people are coming down through on what town and where are they going and so forth? So we're looking at those as possibilities. So sort of deliverables, going about deliverables and stuff, yeah?
You stole some of my information.
Oh.
But because we have a very limited timeframe, we wanted to really have produced something in this short four months. So we looked for things, deliverables that we could get out there. So we have a website that will continue to evolve and so forth, but it's up there, it has events, it has a history of the town and so forth. We have social media accounts that, again, you know, we're adding to them as we go and learning. We have Facebook and Instagram. And as John said, we have print materials that are at the printer as we speak, and we will be distributing those to various places in town and outside of town. And so most of these deliverables are either completed or darn near completion. And then the other thing we really have wanted to focus on is to continue to develop relationships within the organizations in town, to collaborate them, to listen to their vision, and how can we fill in and kind of assist them, promote their mission, promote their visions.
Right. So that's, so that's the essence of it, but there is, there is a sort of a wrap-up in the sense that we are trying to create, what is the, what is the vision for that tourism function, right? What do we want, hope for it to accomplish? You know, there's the vision for tourism, and then there's a vision for the tourism office or the outreach office. What do we want that to, you know, do? So that includes things like, what kind, again, what kind of people do we want to come down? What kind of outreach do we want to do? Where, how do we want to work with existing organizations? We don't want to compete with them, we want to fill in the gaps, we want to support them, we want to sort of do kind of collaborative, cross-silo collaboration. And then we also want to help build over the long-term influence, visibility, relationships with print, with media or television or whatever, so that they know they can come to Newcastle and get a story, you know? And then again, develop the, continue to develop the brand story. So what, what do people, why would, what do, what do people think of Newcastle? Why do you think it would be exciting to come here, basically?
Thank you.
That's it. Thank you.
I just have a couple of questions.
Yes.
Thank you guys for putting this comprehensive report and presenting it to us. Could we add about what school did that event rental thing, Mr. Mayor? Did you say?
Yeah, that's right. Then we had our open house, but yeah.
You have a contact person?
Yes, we do. I'll give that to you.
Okay.
Thank you. And I don't know if there's any other facilities in the city just to promote our resources, not only?
Not just in the historic area.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Potentially have other areas, anything too.
Okay. Well, if you think of any more, just.
Yeah.
I invite everybody, honestly, to do so. And then about the quantitative stuff, I wanted to see if you guys can reach out to Delaware Tourism Office, because they have annual study that they do on those Delaware stuff. And I want to ask that because to get ideas first of all, but also to see if they can segment it from us. I don't even know.
Yeah. We did talk to them about that, and their response was very interesting. They use artificial intelligence.
Oh, okay.
Which is a little, was a little creepy to me.
So was the cell phone data, did they?
Yeah, they used the cell phone.
Because I heard that was not accurate.
Yeah.
But it's not always accurate.
Yeah.
I mean, nothing is going to be always accurate, nobody.
Yeah.
And it's just obviously the, sorry, people, honestly, so.
Yeah. But the segmentation is interesting, because we should look at what they set, because that's, that's almost like an analytical tool, like what are the groups or the profiles that you, you know, put around the groups of people? And, you know, I think we should look at theirs, but ours might be unique to us because it might have to do with what people do when they come to town.
But they weren't able to share part of it for our city with us because it's part of all the others?
Well, we didn't specifically ask them to share it.
But they sent us some data, didn't they?
Ah, did they?
Yeah.
I was just trying to see if we can, you know, give you that one they already paid for so that, you know, we don't have to pay for a whole study ourselves, but, you know, before we go into, because I, when we were discussing disposition, you know, I was really pro doing a study like this so that we can, you know, know.
Really know who's coming.
Yeah.
We also are collecting, I didn't mention, we're collecting competitive benchmarking, like against other towns like us.
Other historic towns.
Best practices.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Yeah, we have lots of information. Yeah, we have lots of information from various historic towns.
Yeah, people help us to put ourselves in a better position too, if we know, you know, who's coming to our town so we can tailor the messaging too. And I just wanted to say thank you for updating, I saw the video was updated with the mayor, current mayor on the visitor page, so the Good Will Sin Newcastle video, so I, I don't know when you guys did that, but.
No, that was previously. That's great.
And thank you for holding the my visit vision session. I thought we also, my failed to mention that earlier.
Oh, good.
I attended, I had a great time, it was nice talking to everybody.
It won't be the last.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We want to do those on other things like the tall ships and whatever, and get people together and come up, you know, have them brainstorm about how to use that, how to connect with tall ships, how that could benefit different organizations and so forth, so.
That's great.
And it's fun.
Thank you.
It is.
One, one question for clarity, when you say the website, you mean our city website, is that right?
No, we, we.
No, we have a visitnewcastle.de.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And it's, it's, it's part of the web presence and we have a strategy about it, why we think that's important to have it as be a separate website, you know, and, and also how does it link from the city website and other websites into it, basically? Because right now the city website is, as you know, it's, it's run by the state, very difficult to sort of have, you know, make much changes to it. I think we think it's better to have a site, a, a page on the site that then refers you to the visitor's site, you know, and so right now it's, it's very confusing, the navigation for visitors through the city sites.
That totally makes total sense. One of the things in today's day and age that I think will dovetail into that, perhaps your own, in the long-term vision is could we create a See a Newcastle Act?
Right.
Yeah, yeah, we talked today about that.
Something like that.
Yeah, there's one underway with Mike Connolly through the, you know, that. So we're trying to figure out whether it makes sense to have a separate one or, or kind of connect with that one, so, yeah, absolutely.
Thank you again for everything.
Welcome.
As the website, I do have just a clarifying question there because Council President and I have been in contact with students at U D about potentially revamping the website in next spring, so I just wanted to kind of see if we can sync all these efforts together because the website firm is done in WordPress. And what they're doing with the new projects is also going to be WordPress so that, you know, staff doesn't have any issues, you know? We can't state controls to design, but the next spring hopefully we can tackle that as well. But can we coordinate that new website for visiting information's kind of in a similar, you know, environment so that.
Yeah, potentially, yeah.
It's also WordPress or whatever we're moving into.
Yeah.
That kind of sync towards that so that these efforts are all, we're not ending up.
So the students working on the city one?
Yeah, they're working right now, adding a sub-page that would be presenting all the current, you know, and pending projects in the city and, you know.
Right, I understand, right.
We were talking about even some of the ideas for website as you go to landing page, are you visitor, are you, you know, resident?
Yeah, yeah.
Kind of direct it to the proper places.
Yeah, that would make more sense.
So we're just trying to sync those efforts so that, you know, we're not, you know, I guess I've seen.
Yeah.
Overusing of WordPress. But yeah, I just wanted to mention that.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
I would just throw out there, you might want to take a look at the city Lewis's webpage.
Okay.
Because obviously they're very geared to tourism even more than we are.
Right.
But, and they have the same issue with dealing with the state as we do, but at the top of their page, they have, are you a tap, are you a resident or are you a visitor?
Okay.
Right.
And then when you click on visitor one, of course you're drilling down into activities and lodging and restaurants and all that stuff.
Yeah.
And it sort of separates it because it's very different reasons.
Very different reasons, yeah.
Absolutely, yeah.
So, I mean, when we get into the full website we design next year with the students.
Yeah.
We're already using Lewis's as a model with.
Oh, that's great, yeah, that's great.
Building projects because they do the same thing, we've got many more building projects than we do. But I think that's been, you know, something that we use as a potential template and we might.
It would be really helpful to have a meeting with when they get into the actual changing of the website.
Yeah, but that won't be until next year because this is just.
Right, I mean, right now there's broken links related to tourism on the site and there's also other, you know.
Well, those kinds of things could be fixed.
Yeah, but, but yeah, long-term, I mean, we've done WordPress sites, the, the, people are tending to move to Wix right now for sites, but, you know, we're open to whatever works and we can always convert it over, you know, if, if it makes sense.
I know what I wanted to ask last, I'm so sorry. But I'm trying to sync us all together.
Yeah, good.
Because this is important, right? So that we're not, you know, all of the things during the same kind of stream. One of the things that Mr. Patel is working with, oh God, the, the last tourism director.
Sarah, probably.
Sarah, yes, thank you, was a communication tool and this is the information business also relevant to you too. Basically, they were developing a system that would talk about, instead of just posting stuff on Facebook and webpage, also texting people. So like we could, we could identify them not, not only about, you know, emergencies and the bills or whatnot, you know, we're talking about some of these gas and.
Right, right.
Or as I said, but people potentially some of these promotions that are happening or delays on the road and stuff. I just wanted to see if you guys can coordinate together and see where this is being brought in because I was told this was kind of done to.
I hadn't heard about this, but that would be.
So it does only create tool for the city to continue using or start using, I guess.
We're working with, meeting with Antonina.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, yeah.
So maybe we can talk about that, yeah, that'd be great.
I might do something by then.
I can just ask a question.
Sure.
People want to volunteer. We have a bunch of places, organizations. So is there some way to recreate a form?
That's a great idea.
That is a good idea.
So that people can check off where they're interested, what their expertise is, so we can get fed off to different organizations than us.
That's a great idea.
Yeah, really good idea because we're always, we need volunteers to be also well known.
Thank you, thanks very much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Visit Newcastle now is not on right now. Does the website, visitnewcastle.
Visitnewcastle.de.
And it's not, it's not working yet, right? Do you come to the website?
The website.
It's.
Oh, it's not working.
Okay. Thank you. Yep, there it is.
Okay, thank you. You'll be happy to hear I have a very short remark tonight, remarks tonight. I just wanted to say that with the new city administrator in place, I see us returning to something like normalcy after the upheavals we had last year. And this will be completed in some ways this Saturday when we have a trustee election and it will be marked the first time in, I think, two years that they will have a full board because they've had many vacancies. So I'm urging everyone to vote on Saturday. We have three candidates. The voting hours is at the fire hall and voting hours are from 10 to four. It's a separate registration from your registration for city and state and federal elections. However, you can register at the polls on election day, just take your ID with your city address, or if you don't have that, you can take something like an MSC or Delmarberville showing a city address. So check their website for details, I may not remember them all absolutely correctly, but I hope everybody will participate because the trust is an important part of our community. And then finally, I'll just do my usual reminder about public comments. We'll try to answer questions if they're simple ones. We cannot engage in extended discussion if the event's not on the agenda. We have represented from Goodwill.
Thank you, good evening, everyone. For the members of council, the March review report should be in your packet and included. It was another steady month, to say the least. Obviously call volume is going to continue to move as we get into the summer months and we start getting into water rescues and things of that nature. Wanted to remind everybody that not this weekend, but next weekend, Saturday, the 20th, we're doing our large-scale water supply drill in downtown Newcastle. There's going to be a, a mild amount of parking displacement during that timeframe. We are trying to be respective as that as much as possible, so we will try to get wrapped up. When the, when our training mission is over, we'll try to get wrapped up and get out of your hair and return life to normal as soon as we can. So we are being mindful of that and trying to work through that. Other than that, unless there's any questions from council, I have nothing more.
Any questions? Please leave. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Back president, I forgot one thing. I didn't write it down, so I forgot it. Also occurring on the 20th, Senior 500 EMT Drew Alden is retiring after 15 years of service to our community. 15 years in retirement sounds kind of funny, however, this is Drew's second career. Drew was a police officer for 21 years with the Newcastle County Police Department, then came to work with us afterwards. So again, Drew will be retiring and we'll be looking to replace him within our ranks as we move forward. So if you, if you've interacted with Drew in the past on a fire truck, on an ambulance call, at the fire station, or if you see him around before he leaves, please congratulate him on his second retirement.
Lucky him.
Okay, public comments. There's our usual three-minute limit, Mr. Zell has the timer, and as usual, please sign in and then state your name and.
Good evening, I'm Suzanne Swift, I live at 16 West Fourth Street here in Newcastle. I am also the Playground Subcommittee Chair and as part of public comments, I wanted to catch you all up to date on what's been happening since the playground was launched, Phase One, back in October. We are actively planning Phase Two and Phase Two is going to look pretty dramatic. It's going to have a wonderful ship-themed element, it'll have an accessible ramp leading up to climbing equipment terminating in slides. And so the kids are looking forward to the slides and we're really looking forward to being able to provide them for them. We also are looking to put in a rubberized surface. We started out with a mulch surface and that we figured was inexpensive and it was good for drainage, but it's not great for accessibility. So we are looking to fundraise and to get rubberized surface there so that the playground can be used by everybody. We're also looking to bring in benches and shading and we're also looking to, to augment the landscaping to keep that area as cool as possible. So in order to make all of these things happen, Encore, which started the push for the playground, became a 501(c)(3) just recently with a lot of help from a lot of people. And I want to thank everybody who participated in getting that off the ground. We had, we, now that we have a 501(c)(3), we are able to fundraise and so fundraising is writing lots of grants. We will be writing grants for the Wellfair Foundation, we've already written grants for Laffey McHugh, A or P. We intend to apply for a Longwood Foundation grant, REI, Presley, Centene, and also apply with the city for a Denrick ORTP grant. We've applied for a grant with the trustees of Newcastle and we're hoping to get an urban and community forestry grant which will allow us to have a student over the summer to help us with the landscaping. So many thanks to the mayor, to Brian Madoway, who wrote wonderful letters of recommendation and support, as well as members of the trustees and other people throughout the community who have been supporting this initiative. The other thing that we're looking forward to doing is to working with Antonina with our proposal for the bond bill so that we hope to get some funding for the accessible surface coming up in this year's bond bill. A lot of work has gone in, a lot of people have contributed to it. As people have questions, please feel free to either attend the Playground Subcommittee, which meets, I believe it's the second Monday of every month. And I just also want to give a plug out to hoping to repair the bathrooms. This is a problem because so many of the kids and parents come to the playground, they need a bathroom, there isn't one now. So I urge City Council to work with the trustees to do whatever you can to bring those bathrooms back up. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Dorsey Fitz at 26 East Third Street, and I would like this in the record. I made it public months ago that while I was a trustee, I requested the Department of Justice to investigate them. There have been several recent improvements, both to the conduct of trustee elections and to their conflict of interest statement. The latter resulted in a trustee's resignation.
Point aboard, Mr. President, this is not city business, this is trustee business.
Yes, it is, I will tell.
This should not be reported here.
The trustees, the trustees gave $2 million to the city some years ago.
It's not city business what you're talking about.
I beg your pardon, this, let me finish this. However, the trustees have refused to let us see the revised conflict of interest statement or sections two and three of the bylaws, and they have circled their wagons in order to prevent us, the trust beneficiaries, from, from obtaining information about their management of our assets in the following ways. One, they refuse to observe the FOIA opinion issued by the DOJ nearly seven years ago. Why? Two, during COVID, they refused to use Zoom for their suddenly closed board meetings, though council opened theirs via Zoom. Three, after COVID, we were told the public would only be allowed to attend four meetings a year and often little information is discussed there. Four, now they've declared that the public may no longer make comments or ask questions at their meetings. Five, now too, the Weekly Paper has been smearing me with lies without using my name because the editor whose office is on trust property is a coward. First, in her June 21/23 issue, she accused someone, me, of self-serving lies and libel and claimed I attacked the trustees, quote, with no proof. Second, in the February 14th issue of this year, she made insinuations about the motives and character of the unknown residents who had called in the DOJ. Third, the next week, she published a letter by a trustee that did the same. Fourth, on March 6th, a Weekly columnist wrote in similar vein. And most recently, in the March 27 issue, a trustee wife wrote that council shouldn't allow speech about the trustees to be heard at a council meeting as they have no connection with city business, though some years ago, the city received $2 million from the trustees. If you pass such an ordinance, it would suppress information that people in town deserve to have. I can't respond to these laws innuendo in the Weekly because Ms. Buchanan won't print anything I say or write. Therefore, the only way I have to let residents know the truth is by speaking out at council. And take note that all these people spewing lies and misinformation about me and the DOJ's investigation are connected to or benefit from the trustees. Thank you.
Well, we do have the right to say we like, we do encourage people in the interest of time and consideration to limit their comments. Yes, I understand. We continue, and we take the right to.
This is something that really needs to be brought up to the public.
I would do. I encourage people to limit their comments to issues related to business. And who else has something they would like to say?
Good evening, my name is Judy Guttenplan, I'm a resident of 35 West Fourth Street. I'm also a member of the Playground Subcommittee, which has been working at City Council the last two years roughly, on the development of a new playground in Battery Park, a safe, accessible, appropriate playground for our city, our children and their families. I'm here also speaking as a parent and a grandparent who's very grateful. I'm here also speaking as a parent and a grandparent who is very grateful for Phase One and the development of the playground so far, and to encourage the City Council to work within the bond bill if possible this year to support Phase Two, in particular, the development of the rubberized surface, which will make the playground totally accessible to people of all abilities, children of all abilities, which is very important. It's very important for the residents that live here. I have grandchildren that spend two weeks with us in Delaware every summer. They come Christmas and Thanksgiving time. They are thrilled, thrilled with the new playground that we've developed. We're going to be doing more, making it bigger, better, more accessible to children of all different ages, with more attractive equipment, colorful equipment, safe equipment. And in addition, as far as extended family, it's very important to have a community appropriate playground to draw in people from outside our town, in addition to the people in town, to support the people that live here. So I'm just encouraging you. I would like to see more happen and more development, and also, as maybe down the road, we can continue to develop all the playgrounds within the city limits. So thank you very much for your time, and thank you very much for what you've done so far. Thank you.
Phil Gross, 1301 13th Street. I guess I'll start off with, as far as the Playground Committee from its very inception, I've noticed the activity in the park grow, and I'm really grateful that the committee has pursued and struggled to get the funding to go ahead with what they've done. What I passed out to Police Chief, Council, and Council people is a copy of my court docket. I was wrongfully arrested for stealing signs, zero proof. The judge, the prosecutor, and my attorney all said that there was zero, zero way that they were going to proceed and try me. They turned the jury back to the jury pool and said, "We're done." An hour and a half later, my attorney was supposed to come out with the paperwork immediately, hour and a half later, he comes out and says, "You know what? We got it resolved." But a certain politician on a state level, a certain politician on a local level called the prosecutor supervisor and hounded them to try to get a no-contact order in place. Judge point-blank said, "They have to learn to act like adults, and you are not going to put me in the sights of Mr. Gross suing me for me restricting his First Amendment right." And you can laugh all you want, but you spewing hate, lies, misinformation all over the city. My letter last month clearly stated that there was no contact order placed against me. I write my letter, first thing, she lies again. That newspaper does not give credible information, is not something that is really, when it comes to journalistic integrity, zero, zero integrity. Yawn, act, whatever. But I ask this council to make sure that they are not in any way an official report from our meetings. She can attend whatever she wants, but just like our council president says, "I'm just taking notes, and this is what I see." It's not necessarily the fact. Nothing the chief prints when it comes to city government, city anything, is true. She restricts who can write rebuttals. Thank you.
I have to say that I think we've always been clear that the only official record of our meetings is minutes, so.
People don't perceive it that way.
No, I can't help that.
Okay, then we'll see it in court.
All right, anyone else? Excuse me, anyone else have a comment? All right, thank you.
My name's David Cobb. I used to live at 725 Pioneer Street, but I've been forced into the streets because I have a multi-fused supersized firebomb sitting connected to my roof. So I refuse to sleep there at this point. I'm going to give a quick synopsis of what went down, because I made a decision finally to contact my insurance company. And if they don't pay the house off and get me out of here, because I've had enough after hunger, here's my family being here, I've had enough. So if they don't pay it off and they drop me, which is what I expect, I can't be nice about this anymore. I've been nice for a very long time. So what happened is, there's a contract rolling town in 2001. November, I called Jeffrey Bertrand, because I work with him before, and Board of Billion Appeals, who might want to deny it, but it's a fact. So I tell Jeffrey what's going on with this house, and he says, his quote, "You're the only one complaining." So, okay, why would I be complaining? At the moment, I have 41 years in the construction industry. I've got way over 80,000 hours of field, half of that being management of some sort. I know what the hell I'm talking about. You can ask your lawyer there how many times over I'm an expert in this kind of field here. So that blew by, so I call 911 on 1st of January 2022. I get arrested. There's a Bambush waiting for me. Fine, I wait 50 weeks for something amounts to, it was trespassing charge. 50 weeks is unheard. I heard that from multiple attorneys. Two days before I'm supposed to go to court and bring all this information to Attorney General's office, I get arrested again, which is just a little kidnap. For six months, I endured threats and torture by way of not letting me work, starved to death. At the end of that, it's first attempted murder, as far as I'm concerned. And at that point, I contacted the governor, Lieutenant Governor, and a few other people. Then the second murder attempt came. At that point, I mailed these in. I have them registered. These went to the House, the Senate, the statewide elected officials, Newcastle County Council, Sussex County Council, Mayor Council Wilmington, Mayor Council Dover, Supreme Court justices, and a few other people. And basically, they were stating the facts, but I put 300 of them to that. I didn't say anything about who was doing what to me. I believe four of these got that same package. I believe the new member don't have it, and I was mad at Valerie at the time. I didn't say anyone heard. So you got your way. I went out of here. I had enough torture, torment, misery. I've lost over half a million dollars. My retirement's shot. All my savings is shot. My careers are just destroyed, basically, how I've had it set up after 41 years. It's amazing. Just did good. Quite a job, though. So, but I'm here to tell you, if my insurance don't pay for this house, I'm going to do what it takes to make this go right. You certified this thing to be built. You said it was a wonderful thing to have. You own it. He's your employee. You now own it. You should remove that thing for you to kill somebody. It's a clear present danger to the public. Now, I brought this from Max, but he's your employee. Would you like to have it?
Your property, you really know what you want. I'm just asking, one of your employees, if you need a good idea about that. Thank you. That will set back for, it's not like they later say.
Any other comments? Okay, next item of business is ordinance 544, which unfortunately, we had a corrected version that was supposed to be the version linked in the posting of the agenda item, but it's the uncorrected version. So yet again, we're going to have to table this till next month so that the public has the opportunity to review the corrected version before we proceed. So do I have a motion to table?
Table, sue move?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And we'll move on to ordinance 546, which is what the public hearing was about earlier regarding the change in the flood building code regarding mechanical structures in buildings, new construction in the special flood hazard areas. Is there further discussion from council about this?
Does the public hearing comments that we made go in the record? We don't have to repeat them now? I don't have to ask the same question?
There's separate minutes of the public hearing that we'll see next month. Okay, the title of the ordinance is "An Ordinance to amend the City of Newcastle Code, Chapter 130 Regarding Buildings and Structures in Special Flood Hazard Areas."
Do you have a question, Councilman? There would be separate minutes of the whole architecture in the first year.
I just wanted to make sure that our votes right now, people know that we have discussed it somewhat long ago, it was here for public hearing, so that that's not lost in, you know, that there was a little clarification made earlier, so.
I'll just summarize it for those of you who were here earlier, so you know what we're talking about. Most of us in Newcastle who have flood insurance have a FEMA, the Federal Emergency Management Agency. They have certain ratings for communities, and the better you rate them, the lower our flood insurance premiums are. And we have, as part of this, to maintain our rating, we have an annual review. And during the recent review, they found that Newcastle, along with most other towns in Delaware, no longer is in compliance with the FEMA requirements for protection of mechanical structures, that means like heat and air conditioning, for buildings. Our current code says that the structures have to be at least one foot above freeboard, right? Flood elevation?
One and a half.
One and a half feet above elevation, above the flood elevation. However, there is currently an exception, which allows those that are, that mechanical structures that are waterproof to resist water intrusion may be placed below this elevation. FEMA now does not want to grant that exception. So this ordinance simply removes that exception from our code. This applies only to, number one, buildings in what's called the special flood hazard area, which is within the 100-year flood zone. So it's not, the majority of the city is not included in this, and it only applies to new construction. So if your house is in this area and your furnace is in the basement, as many of ours are, you don't have to move it. It's only for new construction. Did I get that all right?
Yes.
Okay. So any further discussion from council on this issue?
Yes, I have a question for Mr. Bertrand and Mrs. Walton. In respect to how we're dealing with new construction, do we have any sites within the city right now that, if this passes today, would affect, quote, "Do you have anything in the hopper?"
No, nothing in the hopper. We haven't built anything in violation of this for quite some time.
So you're saying basically, most new construction in the flood hazard area has been doing this anyway? We're just formalizing it in our code?
As the building code.
Right, okay.
And Max, this will only apply as of the resolutions date, correct?
Yeah.
So even current construction right now, even though it's new, it wouldn't apply as, if we prefer.
If there's no other questions, I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 546.
Motion approved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Roll call.
Oh, ordinance, roll call, thank you. Council President Satter?
Aye.
Councilperson Jay?
Aye.
Councilperson Zell?
Aye.
Councilperson Madoway?
Aye.
Councilperson Dublock?
Aye.
Motion passed and announced. Thank you. Okay, the next item we move into, new business. We have a resolution to approve a subdivision on 12 R. Davis Avenue, lots 144 and 146. I will read the resolution. A resolution approving the subdivision for 12 R. Davis Avenue, lots 144 and 146, the Buttonwoods, parcel number 21-001-00-007. Whereas Feathers Group LLC has applied to the Council of Newcastle for subdivision approval for property known as tax parcel 21-001-00-007, within the city limits, and whereas the Planning Commission has reviewed the application under the terms of the subdivision regulations and zoning ordinance, and has determined that the application is in conformity with the same, and has therefore recommended to City Council that the subdivision be approved. And whereas the council determines that the application meets the requirements necessary for the approval of this subdivision, as shown on the attached Exhibit A. Now, therefore, let it be resolved that the application of Feathers Group LLC for subdivision approval for 12 R. Davis Avenue, lots 144 and 146, the Buttonwoods, parcel number 21-001.00-00-007, within the city limits, as shown hereby on a plat prepared by Civil Engineering Associates LLC, dated February 27, 2024, last updated March 12, 2024, and attached here to, as in the office, as Exhibit A, reflecting such subdivision is approved, and such plat shall be entitled to be recorded in the Office of Newcastle County Recorder of Deeds. The subdivider shall record the subject subdivision within 45 days of the date of this resolution, and inform the building official of the exact placement, exact place of recordation within that office. Failure to record the subdivision within the aforementioned timeframe shall render this resolution null and void. Is there any discussion of this? Walton, do you have any comments about it?
I don't. It's a hybrid subdivision. Mr. Robert was here, he'll take responsibility. I just have a question about, you know, what was discussed in the Planning Commission, if you don't mind summarizing.
As Mr. Walton stated, it's a hybrid subdivision. There was some discussion about the provision of utilities. My office wrote a review letter for the Planning Commission for their consideration. It was approved with conditions. Those conditions were met via various bits of information being submitted after the meeting. I reviewed that information and found the subdivision for you is in compliance with the subdivision regulations and the conditions of the Planning Commission. It's a three-lot subdivision in the R2 zone, and the developers planning on building duplexes on each of the new lots. And, excuse us.
Excuse me.
Excuse me, sir.
Could you take your conversations into the lobby, please? Could you take your conversations to the lobby, please? Thank you.
They're proposing three lots, and the owner has stated that they want to build duplexes, which are permitted uses in the R2 zone. And a duplex is two units on one lot.
And do you know if it's going to be rental, or is it going to be, you know, selling?
It's got to be rental.
Yeah, there's. But most likely be rented.
Well, there would be no way to sell them otherwise, right? Because there's two units on one lot. This isn't a condo subdivision. If you have two units on one lot, lot eight, I mean, you have to.
Unless, unless the owner lives in one.
Own one and rent the other, yes, but at least half of them will be rented.
Any further questions or discussions? Are we ready to vote? So I hear a motion to approve Resolution 2024-13.
Motion approved.
A second? All in favor?
Aye.
Passed. Okay. The next item of business is a resolution to, Resolution 2024-14, a resolution to designate three vehicles owned by the city as surplus property and authorizing disposal of said surplus property. Whereas the City of Newcastle owns a 2015 Chevy Tahoe, a 2014 Dodge Charger, and a and a 2018 Dodge Charger, for which it no longer has a need. And whereas the City Council has determined that these vehicles represent surplus assets and should be liquidated and disposed of. Now thereby, therefore, it is hereby resolved that the city does hereby approve the sale and disposition of the following vehicles. 2015 Chevy Tahoe, 2014 Dodge Charger, and 2018 Dodge Charger. The vehicle ID numbers are specified, but I don't know that I have to read those numbers now. Further resolved that the city administrator shall have the authority to market and sell these vehicles at public or private sale, and upon such terms as conditions as the city administrator shall deem appropriate in her sole discretion. I will say that these are former police vehicles. The police equipment has been removed from them. Because we have a new lease agreement for most city vehicles to enterprise, these vehicles will simply be returned to them and get some credit, I guess, towards future vehicle leases. So there's not a sale in the normal sense of the word. Is there any question or comment discussion about this resolution?
Motion to approve. Pass Resolution 2024-13.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. All right. The next item is you, when William Bartel, our former city administrator, resigned last year, we arranged with him to be under contract with us for six months to provide advice, basically to be a consultant. Because he had been with us for 10 years, he had extensive institutional knowledge, and we had a number of new members of staff, and he's been very helpful during that six months. The contract expires at the end of, or no, expires the 14th or 15th of this month, I think, the current contract. And this is the time of year when we have to make our bond, our request to the state legislature for funds through the bond bill. And Mr. Bartel has extensive experience doing this. We have no one else on staff at the moment who has ever done this before. It's new to Ms. Tantillo, and our, our finance coordinator just began working with us last June, so she's never been through it either. So what I'm proposing tonight is that we renew Mr. Bartel's contract for a period of one month to, extend the contract, I should say, rather than renew, for a period of one month to have the advice, have the advantage of his expertise in submitting the bond bill request and other things as well, perhaps help in preparing the budget, since, again, he has extensive experience with that. We have spoken to Mr. Bartel, he's willing to do this. So that's the point of discussion tonight. Any questions or comments from council?
I just have one question. When we were initially drafting this contract, did we set to pay monthly regardless of how many hours? Was, I know there was talk about, I think, five hours or something like that, but I don't, this is not the, for the last month, I think Mr. Bartel was not in the country. Like, is, isn't what, can we just move that into this month?
Well, I, I contacted him, he told us he would be available while he was away, and he was. I contacted him, we emailed, and I think other staff members did as well.
Okay, so he was still working while he was on vacation?
He was still working. He was away, but, you know, given modern technology.
That was my, that was my only question.
It's possible for people to work from, from, without being here in town. So yes, to answer your first question, it was a flat, the contract is a flat monthly fee for up to 10 hours a week. So he doesn't have to submit an itemized invoice, you know, per, it's not a per-hour contract, it's a per-month contract. And we are proposing to renew it, or to extend it for one month on the same terms.
The, the one-month extension will get us through submission to this.
Yes, because the deadline for the bond bill is May 15th, and we really should do it before that. Yeah, it's not good to wait till the last minute on those things. So, yes, that's, that was the whole idea of making it a one-month extension. Anything else?
Motion to approve.
I just wanted to make a comment too. I, I just want to be clear, and I've said this before. I do think council needs to have some input on the bond bill submission.
Oh, absolutely.
I don't think we've had that to pass.
So.
Whether it's just a review, suggestions.
If anyone has any things that they would like to be added to this request, or at least considered for it, just send them to Ms. Tantillo, is that right?
Yeah, councilperson, I, I totally agree. As I said, councilperson Madaway and myself have, you know, just emailed Council President Satter about, you know, playground.
And I passed that along.
But yeah, it has, it has been something that I've been thinking about too, in the sense that, you know, as priorities for the city are identified, you know, it'd just be nice to review them before we, you know, and early on in the process if possible, so that we have several months to, you know.
Well, we're not going to have several months at this point.
No, I'm, I'm talking about going forward.
If I may make a comment, I'll address this with a couple of the council members, but I definitely want to review how we do our budget process, and the bond bill and other requests as part of that conversation. And once I learn more about the priorities and for those priorities in these, you know, budgetary items.
Thanks, Sharon.
Okay, any further comment or discussion?
No.
Okay, we have a first, we have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
You can't say.
Oh, sorry, sorry. I thought Joe was just motioning again. Sorry, I wasn't sure if we were.
All right, so I believe Mr. Zubaka made the motion, and Mr. Day seconded, is that correct? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And the, the fourth item of new business is a discussion of our policy for handling comments and questions submitted via email prior to council meetings. When meetings are posted, the posting says that if someone has a comment but is not able to make the meet, to attend the meeting, they may send an email up to 3 o'clock the afternoon of the meeting. So, and today, that would have been as of 3 o'clock this afternoon. And when we receive those, they are passed on to council members. In the past, we've had a, a past practice, I should say, of reading those out loud at the meetings. But that's becoming burdensome in many ways. And so the point of tonight's discussion is to not read them out loud. Now, that does not mean they won't become part of the record. Each council member would get a copy of the email, and it would be attached to the minutes of the meeting as an attachment, so that it would become part of the, of the record of the meeting. The only change is to not read it out loud. And I was wondering, well, the purpose of tonight's discussion is to see what you all think about that idea and if, how we should proceed going forward. We do not, the announcement that goes with the posting of the agenda does not say that, that the emails will be read out loud, but we have had practice of doing so.
And this wasn't something that was in our code, like, you know, in a, mentioned anywhere?
No, it's just, we, it's to make it possible for people to make comments. And if they, it's not that we're going to ignore those comments. They will be, a copy of the email will be given to each council member. Now, it's probably not going to make it into the packet, because if they don't come in until 2:30 on the afternoon of the meeting, but at a minimum, you'd find them at your place when you came to the meeting. And then a copy will be attached to the minutes, so they do become part of the record.
Is there a way to move that timeframe up?
Which sense, sorry?
Oh, to make it earlier than.
Make it earlier so we can get it into the package?
Well, we'd have to back it up to like Friday, because that's when, or Monday, it goes.
I'm not too worried about it myself, honestly, because public comment you get during a meeting. So, you know, like, we don't have to react to it at the meeting. We can always react to those that we can, you know, if possible. That's kind of what we've been doing lately, but I feel like public comments is something that we receive right now, and we don't, some we may be able to answer, some we may not. So I don't see it personally as too big of an issue, even if we receive it right, you know, on our table here, but.
It is unfortunate that we're at this position now. And we're at this position because we've allowed speakers to come up and back, accuse the trust of, of issues and accuse personal, and with personal attacks on people. So no matter what we do here with the emails, it's not going to stop the people from getting up at the podium, apparently, and, and saying whatever they want, whether it was true or not. We all have heard all this rhetoric about the trust. I don't know what the trust has done, what they haven't done, but I do know the Department of Justice looked into it, and nothing came out of it. I don't, I don't know why it has to be rehashed here. I understand there might be some, some issues with us restricting it, but, I mean, it sounds like we're trying to restrict the emails, but you can still come up here and say anything you want, which is kind of disheartening. But I will also say, for the person that's out there that wants to submit an email that's legitimate city business, it's kind of taking their voice away. So I'm not really in favor of taking their voice away on legitimate city business. It's all this other rhetoric that, that, you know, it just, the pot just keeps stirring.
Yeah, my understanding is that we can't pick and choose which ones we would read and which ones we wouldn't read. And we can't restrict, if we were going to restrict comments to only matters under the jurisdiction of the council, that would mean we couldn't have reports from the fire company. We couldn't have reports like the one we had a month before last from the superintendent of the school district, because those are not matters under the jurisdiction of the city council. So it's a matter of listening to some things we may find disagreeable at times in order to be able to hear other public information from various groups and organizations in town that are very important to the community, such as the fire company. Is that correct, Ms. Walton?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Mr. Walton, could you give us a brief summary of what other cities do as it relates to email communications except to the council?
I have never seen anybody else read the communication.
And how is it that, sorry, do you mind?
Yeah, written communication, if they send in a letter, it's distributed to all members of council. I had it thought, so if you have a public comment on a zoning matter or whatever, written communication comes as part of the record, just as the council person said, it's attached to the minutes, or whatever the official record is of that meeting. That's the normal practice. You guys don't do it that way, since I've been here. You guys actually read the, you know, they, you read whatever anybody says and you put it into the record that way. The idea is that the comment gets to council. The other idea is that, you know, you don't want to restrict it and work for somebody whatever they want, right? That's not the purpose, but if you wanted to speak, you'd have to come to council. That's the common practice.
So a strange question here, and I don't know if this was discussed elsewhere. You know, there is a limit to three minutes right now to what you can say in the council. Is there a limit, what you can write as well, you know, so like, somebody can write 50 pages in some minute, right? And we don't necessarily want to add 50 pages to our, you know, meeting minutes, because we're still limiting even emails, technically, right? To certain amount of, do we need to talk about a character limit or a limit? Regardless of whether they're city, you know, comments to Mr. Day's point, or, or, you know, something personal, so.
You could, you could add a character limit if you so chose to do so. Generally, what we've done in the past is you read until three minutes, there hasn't been a limit on the number of orders or whatever, you read until three minutes are up, and then you stop. That's the way we've done it in the past.
It just doesn't seem fair to people talking for three minutes, and somebody could just email and not look for it, and then, you know, write a poll and say about something. It was just, thinking about.
There's nothing illegal, there's nothing illegal about reading it into the record. There's nothing illegal about not reading it into the record and just texting it. There's nothing illegal about, you know, putting up 2,000 words in there, or whatever it is on a communication. I have no idea how many words will fit into.
Yeah, it would be something if you asked me. This is really a capital correction.
I understand. I just wanted to see if there was a conversation in other jurisdictions about length of the emails.
I am not aware of any other jurisdiction that has a length of email. I am very aware that most jurisdictions have a three-minute public comment period, just like you.
Thank you.
I have a question. When you were talking about it has to be under a city's jurisdiction, okay? And that we could not include the fire company or the presentation made by the school superintendent. But the Goodwill Fire Company receives funding from us. So isn't that under our jurisdiction?
If they were speaking to, I mean, my take on it is if they were speaking to us about that funding request, yes. Or if they were making a grant request that the city had to sign up, that the council had to approve, similar to what we did with MSC, that would be under the council's jurisdiction, and then it would be appropriate. But to, to just give a report, as we heard tonight, about their activities, my understanding is if we say we will only take comments on matters under the jurisdiction of council, those kinds of things would not be permitted. We'd have to rule out anything that's not under the jurisdiction of council. Is that an accurate answer?
It is. So I'm going to be very brief, because I've written that look on this in an attorney's line privilege. You can't engage in viewpoint discrimination. Very safe to say that. So if you limit public comment, you have to limit public comment in time, place, and manner. You have to put very narrow bounds on it, and you have to stick to it. Because like some people talking about, where that line is drawn, it's very difficult to draw. I've provided confidentially a number of cases on drawing on that line. So yes, the answer is it's a limited public forum. You can't put restrictions on it. If you put restrictions on it, I will enforce those restrictions very strictly. And I'm not sure that the council will.
Well, I guess my suggestion at this point is we try making this change, that we no longer read them out loud, they will be attached as a, made part of the record by being attached to the minutes, and each council member will be given a copy. And we won't deal with the length unless we start having a problem with people submitting 50 pages or whatever. Does that seem reasonable?
I mean, I'm, I'm with Joe on this, unfortunately, that we're, we shouldn't be here discussing this matter to begin with, because, you know, the hope is that somebody submitting an email not being able to attend for whatever reason, right? And that we discuss it potentially, if, if, you know, because otherwise, I don't, I think it almost gets lost if we don't.
You mentioned.
No, no, sorry, just, just to finish the thought, like, I don't, I don't think anybody would go to the minutes, go to public comments perhaps, and identify what Mr. Zubaka has, you know, emailed the council on. Just, just my opinion, so.
Well, let me ask.
That, to me, is lost there.
You can have that.
Regardless of the matter, I guess.
So if the emails are provided to council prior to this meeting, or they're at your place when you come here, we, you don't get that many of them, but you do get some. And they're usually easily read before the meeting, by yours individual self, okay? Not, not at the meeting. So if you want to pull something out of that email, or address something in that email verbally to everyone, you're still able to do so.
Three, that was getting, my question too. If I came in and found an email from John Smith about such and such an issue that I thought should be brought out, could I discuss it during council meeting?
We can discuss it during council meeting if it was a matter that was on the agenda for that night. Or, or, just like we don't comment on everybody who makes a public comment, right? We don't say that to discuss it. But if it's a matter that's brought up that you would want further discussion on, you can add it to the agenda for the next.
For a future meeting.
So discussion, we certainly discuss if the matter was on the agenda. I'm going to pick something random that already passed, of the selling of surplus property. I don't think you should sell surplus property. Certainly, if the person makes a good point, you could add that in at the time of the discussion. But if it was, I'm going to pick something completely out of the world, right? That we want to purchase the Goodwill Fire Company building. That's something we should do, something we wouldn't do. But if that was a, you would have to, if you wanted to further discuss that, you'd have to put it on the agenda and discuss it.
Don't restrict that. Don't restrict.
I'm sorry, Mr. Bruce, public comments are over.
Don't restrict.
Probably, you were saying.
We're not restricting what people can say. We're simply discussing whether or not we should not read emails aloud at the meetings, but rather give copies to each member of council and make them part of the record as attachments.
If it falls within your limits.
Point of order.
So.
And that is a lot of what you said earlier about, we're either reading all of them, or not reading all of them, but we just.
we're either reading all of them, we're not reading all of them, but we just still opt in the one that we think is very important.
If you want to, I said for a matter on the agenda, that would be fine.
And if we thought it was important in the future, it would have to go on to a future agenda. But it could not be discussed at that meeting when the email came in.
Think of it just like somebody comes in for public comment here and they say, I want you to do blank, right? And we can't really discuss it, it's not on the agenda, but we put it on the agenda for the next meeting. Same will hold true for a written comment.
Okay, any further discussion?
As much as I do not like having to hear these personal attacks and everything, I, I still have an issue with us limiting access. And I want the council, in my opinion, we should be transparent and do everything out in the open and not bury these emails behind our minutes. And, and I've been very clear, I do not like what's going on, but I also don't want to, you know, close the ranks and make it harder for people to contact us or for us to be transparent.
I don't see how it would make it more difficult for them to contact us, because they can still send us either individually or to the city office. I see what you mean about transparency, because if they're just attached to the minutes, you're right, not many people are going to see them.
It's not really public, I mean, I guess it is public comments, but if you're going to bury them behind the minutes, I mean, the whole point is for them to be vocalized here, I think, but.
Well.
You could have a motion and a vote. You could have no motion and go on, either way.
So I guess we could continue on as we have been, and if it becomes a further problem, we can raise this issue again at a future meeting? Does that seem reasonable?
I think the only difference is in the past, I think when you wrote the letter the other day, we didn't put a timer on. So maybe we need to put a timer.
Oh, right, oh, that's already applied. I mean, that particular email I knew was not going to be three minutes, because it was only like a quarter of a page. But there have been previous times when I had a longer one, and I would have asked you to start the timer for that one.
Thanks.
So, so the three minutes, the three-minute rule applies to an email that's to be read, just as it does to the person standing at the podium and speaking.
I guess this is a question for, for Mr. Walton. I, I'm, yeah, I'm saying the same thing as Joe, I'm really conflicted about this. Um, if we were to remain the same, with the same practices that we have right now, um, and we got two emails, one about purchasing fire, I'm just going to use the same examples you just made, right? One that doesn't exist, purchasing this building. And one that we discussed about vehicles being sold, right? Um, same way that we can tell the person giving a public comment that what they're saying is not part of the city business or agenda, can that same be applied as we are, as council president, president is trying to read those emails? And then we partial part that is applicable and not.
We're not going to have it, we're either going to have it read to front, or we're going to attach it.
It doesn't seem, doesn't seem, doesn't seem consistent with, with the verbal comment, because verbal comments, we can't tell a person that they are not talking about something that.
We'll have it, we're going to have to have an offline privileged conversation.
My understanding is we cannot.
Oh, I thought.
With very little, with very few exceptions, we cannot stop someone from speaking on a particular topic. We can only limit them to three minutes.
Limit them to three minutes, or if you so choose to strictly enforce.
Yeah, if we want to be really strict about it, then we just, it has to be something that's under the jurisdiction of council, which would eliminate perhaps much other useful information from members of the community. All right, I'm sensing that we're going to just keep doing what we've been doing, and we'll see how it goes, and we may need to revisit this in the future. Is that the consensus?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, that, that's the consensus, yeah.
Okay. All right, the next item is a resolution approving a subdivision on, Resolution twenty-four, twenty twenty-four fifteen, a resolution approving a subdivision for six hundred and six ten Tremont Street and six oh one to six eleven Deemer Place. Whereas Selden Scranton Deemer the second has applied to the council of Newcastle for subdivision approval for properties known as tax parcels number twenty-one dash zero one five point zero zero dash zero three five and twenty-one dash zero one five point zero zero dash zero three six within the city limits. And whereas the planning commission has reviewed the application under the terms of the subdivision regulations and zoning ordinance, and has determined that the application is in conformity with the same, and has therefore recommended to city council that the subdivision be approved. And whereas the council determines the application meets the requirements necessary for the approval of this subdivision as shown on the attached exhibit A. Now therefore be it resolved that the application of Selden Scranton Deemer the second for subdivision approval for six hundred and six ten Tremont Street and six oh one to six eleven Deemer Place, parcel numbers twenty-one dash zero one five point zero zero dash zero three five and twenty-one dash zero one five point zero zero dash zero three six within the city limits, as shown hereby on a plaque prepared by the Pelsa Company dated January seventeenth, twenty twenty-two, last updated March twentieth, twenty twenty-four, and attached hereto as exhibit A, reflecting such subdivision is approved, and such plaque shall be entitled to be recorded in the office of the Newcastle County Recorder of Deeds. The subdivider shall record the subject subdivision within forty-five days of the date of this resolution and inform the building official of the exact place of recordation within that office. Failure to record the subdivision with the, within the aforementioned timeframe shall render this resolution null and void. Um, I walked over there this afternoon to take a look, because I actually used to live in one of the, at six oh eight Tremont Streets. So I was somewhat familiar with it. It's basically two rows of houses that are back to back, their backyards back up to each other. And actually, the notice that's still posted from when it appeared before the planning commission is very clear that no, um, the property line's just going to go, they're going to divide each house and make it a separate piece of property. And no, they're outbuildings, most of them have like a little storage shed behind the house. None of those are going to have to be moved or re-impacted. It's simply a matter of, instead of two large plots, it's going to be divided into individual plots for each residence. And that's the sole purpose of this, is that correct, Ms. Rogers?
Yes, this is a subdivision that's creating lots around existing dwellings. There's no new improvements being proposed. Uh, two of the lots are being proposed around semi-detached, two semi-detached units where the lot line will, uh, coexist with the common wall. Uh, again, there's no new improvements being proposed. Uh, this was also before the board of adjustment, before it came to the planning commission, given the nature of the area, and the board of adjustment granted eleven variances, uh, to allow the subdivision to proceed to the planning commission. Uh, the planning commission reviewed it, approved it with conditions, uh, some minor conditions, and we were sure that those conditions have been met.
Okay, any further questions or discussion?
I just don't see this other parcel on here on this provided map, is that, um, can somebody point you to one, twenty-one dash oh fifteen, oh oh dash zero three five? I can only find the zero three six, but not zero three five. So I'm just curious where it is other than that, no questions? And it's timeless, I'm sure I'm missing something, but.
I believe one of the parcels referenced is the lot that's being divided into the two semi-detached lots. And the other existing parcel are, is a, is a, is the parcel associated with the new single-family detached lots?
Okay, so zero three five, if I'm understanding this right, would be the one created by this subdivision, zero three six existed. Because I've seen zero three six on the map, to just confirm.
I don't know which parcel is which, but there are two existing parcels here, and those two existing parcels are being subdivided into seven lots total. So those, those parcel numbers will most likely go away when subdivision occurs, and there will be new parcel numbers aside. So those are existing parcels.
No, I understand, but then, I'm just wondering where the zero three five is on the map, because I see some others five oh four, three six nine, five oh three, but five oh four, like, but three six eight, not the zero three five.
Are you familiar, did you drive over there and take a look at these areas?
I know where it is, but I, I'm, you know, I'm just curious about where the parcel is.
So we can sell them, because otherwise it's locked right now, you can't do anything. So all it is, is dividing the evidence and.
I'm not questioning that, I'm just wondering where it's on the map, that's all.
So zero three five currently is six oh two, six oh four, six oh six, I'm sorry, six hundred oh two, oh four, oh six, six oh eight Tremont Street. That's currently the zero three five parcel is.
Okay. Thank you, Chair.
Any further questions or discussion? Um, is there a motion to approve?
Still move.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Two, and please. Okay, the next item is business number six in our packet. It's number, no, it's number four in our packet, it's number six on the agenda. Okay, Resolution twenty twenty-four dash sixteen, a resolution approving the lot line adjustment plan prepared for David Scott and Rebecca Bechtel nineteen and twenty-three the Strand. Whereas David Scott and Rebecca Bechtel have applied to the council of Newcastle for a lot line adjustment plan approval for properties known as tax parcels twenty-one dash zero one five point zero zero dash one eight six and twenty-one dash zero one five point zero zero dash one eight seven within the city limits. And whereas the building official has reviewed the applications under the terms of the subdivision regulations and zoning ordinances, and has determined that the application is in conformity with the same, and has therefore recommended to city council that the lot line adjustment plan be approved as a re-subdivision as defined by the subdivision regulations. And whereas the council determines that the application meets the requirements necessary for the approval of this re-subdivision as shown on the attached exhibit A. And now therefore be it resolved that the application of David Scott and Rebecca Bechtel for the approval of a lot line adjustment plan nineteen and twenty-three the Strand, parcels twenty-one dash zero one five point zero zero dash one eight six and twenty-one dash zero one five point zero zero dash one eight seven within the city limits as shown hereby on a plaque prepared by the Pelsa Company dated January, February twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four, and attached hereto as exhibit A, reflecting such lot line adjustment is approved, and such plaque shall be entitled to be recorded in the office of the Newcastle County Recorder of Deeds. The subdivider shall record the subject plan within forty-five days of this resolution and inform the building official of the exact place of recordation within that office. Failure to record the subject plan within the aforementioned timeframe shall render this resolution null and void. Um, I walked over here also, there are three lots between Alexander Alley and,
Packet Alley.
Packet Alley on the Strand. There are only two houses there, because lot number nineteen is undeveloped, and it's owned by the same, it's part of the parcel on which the house that has the number twenty-one is located. And then next to that is house with the address number twenty-three. So it's a little confusing, because it's two plots, but, um, three lots, but only two of them have houses on them. Mr. Rogers, would you like to?
Yeah, um, this is a subdivision that, uh, there's a purpose of plan note at the top of the subdivision that we had the surveyor put on there, uh, which is a requirement of the subdivision rates. And this is simply a subdivision plan that eliminates a lot line and adds one existing parcel to another existing parcel. Uh, such a subdivision is called a re-subdivision per the subdivision regulations. There's no new development potential being created as a result of this re-subdivision plan slash lot line adjustment. Uh, this is, these types of subdivisions don't have to be reviewed by the planning commission. Uh, they're administratively approved, which is very typical, uh, uh, practice for subdivision regulations throughout the state.
And my understanding is at this point in time, the same couple owns both plots, right? Both parcels, is that correct?
Uh, based on the information on the plan, yes. The, the, I mean, ultimately, the owners have to sign the plan.
Right.
Uh, so.
But, but in other words, there's not another owner involved in this change?
If, if there is, they'll have to sign the plan.
Right.
We don't, we don't really get into who owns, who owns what.
Oh, okay.
Surveyors surviving, certifying what's shown on the plan, and the owners are certifying that they, that they are the owners of the parcels.
Because frequently, in a case like this, we'll ask, well, do the neighbors agree with this change? Well, in this case, it's all the same party owning both plots, yes. So there's no neighbor to approve or disapprove, because it's all the same people.
Yeah, you, you could not add on someone else's land to your land without that person's approval.
Right.
By virtue of signing the plan.
Right. Are there any other questions or discussion? Is there a motion to approve?
Still move.
Second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. Okay, and then the last item.
Last two.
Excuse me, last two, but they're related.
Yep.
Okay, the first one is a discussion. Mr. Walton or Mr. Rogers?
I'm prepared.
Okay.
So this is a, back on the eighteenth day of November two thousand and three, there was a subdivision on the Deemer Plaza property, where they had and they created a new parcel. And for whatever reason, which I don't know why, um, there was a, there was a cross, like a generalized cross-access easement that was put in place to get from one parcel to the other for utilities. That also stated on there, this general one, that, um, that amendment had to be approved by the council of Newcastle. Um, so the developers of the battery, um, have asked council to, um, to amend that and remove the cross-access easement. Uh, the cross-access easement, once the battery has done as a new utility, you might recommend, recommendation that you're purging, because it doesn't mean anything. It just, it's gone, it's moved forward, but, so that, that's kind of where we stand on that. So that would be, that's what they prepared a book for you, for the, for the, I think, Mr. Rogers, to look at. Have you looked at the cross-access?
Aye.
Okay, all right.
A little history of that.
Yeah, yeah, so anyway, that's what it is.
But I thought part of this involved access to the sewer system pumping station?
Next agenda item.
Oh, okay.
This, this first agenda item is just to eliminate, just to say, we're not, we don't care about this declaration of cross-access and utility easement, which is general, which is never going to be extended.
So we're basically eliminating something that was put in years ago for a reason we don't know. It's never been used and changing it now really doesn't make any difference.
It's an access to a couple of parcels that are going to be eliminated in any way whatsoever.
Okay, so, sorry guys, I know it's, I've been here for, for a while now. Where apartments are supposed to be built is the current access.
Yes, it has nothing to do with access.
I'm trying to understand this easement, I guess. Something got it added, so.
It's here. Say it again. The cross-access.
Now we got set, any further questions or discussions? Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye, aye.
So now the second.
Now the second one is a little more complicated. So let me try to get through that. I know it's probably over there, it's a mistake, so if you can tell me I'm mistaken. Um, there was formerly a proposal which I provided to, uh, members of council where, um, where the proposal was that the city would take ownership of what I'm going to call the pump station parcel. And if you look at the back of the agenda, it's that big square block that now encompasses the pump station parcel. And we had, we in the city had prepared an agreement where that would be donated to the city, but also put in a number of contingencies upon our taking it for free, which we included, but are not limited to environmental studies being done on the parcel. Um, there, there was had to be access, they had to pay for, uh, the entrance that goes in and we would have, rather make the due diligence period. Subsequent to that, the owner of the parcel, um, said, we would rather propose to take an easement across the city's property, which is, that's, if you look on the map, it's parcel one C. So an access easement, and the access easement is needed, uh, because ultimately, uh, once the battery is built, which is the parcel one A, there is no way for the county to access the pump station because it's going to be raised up where the battery is. So their proposal that they bring to council is that they would, A, build a curb cut essentially so you could, to have the access possessed, could I think it would be done, B, for the grant of the city's easement um, across to the pump station parcel and ultimately provide some landscape there. The proposal is outlined in the, um, cross-access maintenance easement agreement um, that was prepared by the developers' council. It had in there all that I had asked for, um, but at the end of the day, um, that's, that's council decision. So whether or not you want to go after the access easement, um, but what we had previously discussed regarding taking ownership of the, of the parcel, that was taken off the table and the other things that council had asked for. And unless you got to talk, if I said anything incorrectly.
I'll ask that question, why do we own this little piece in the first place?
I asked that exact same question and I believe, but I didn't go back and research all the time. I believe and was told that that's where the pump station used to be and then somewhere along it got moved. So that's why we have to own that little tiny parcel. We have to give Newcastle.
So my, my only question is impact on our public works theme. Um, since currently for access to this is being, county is using the pathway next to the liquor store to access, they're not using the city, city's location because there's already an access to it. So that's going to be raised, I understand that part. We don't use this lot, to my knowledge, so somebody could correct me here. Now, the maintenance of this as we look into, you know, snow season, if we, if we're looking at, you know, any damages there that, that, you know, county can't access, I just want to understand how, how does that now, you know, play with our, um, public works themes, I wish, were they part of this conversation as well? To know that this is being added, you know, um, I, I'm not there, I guess. Does anybody understand what I'm saying, I guess?
Jackson owns the property where the pump station is, county is once, once again, if you want to think it's in there.
I'm talking about city-owned, um, area that's going to be used as an easement that we would have to not maintain, that we might not maintain as much.
So number four, A, maintenance of easements, right? I'm just going to check it myself, it's somebody's sole responsibility, the grantee. Jackson LLC is the, is the grantee under this, right?
So there are the maintenance, so they're taking maintenance of the easement.
They're taking maintenance of the easement.
Okay, just. And this, this could be already taken care of by public works, I have no idea, I, I, because it's, there's nothing there that we, we do as a city, I think, so.
So just, so just so I could read it, so you, so this is, they're taking all reasonable costs and expenses necessary for the maintenance, repair, replacement of the driveway and up curtsied. I think that's how I say it, services including but not limited to snow plowing, periodic sealing collectively, certainly the sole responsibility granted.
Okay.
And it further says that they will, will install a landscape screen.
That would be, that was the other part of, of their offer was to install the landscape screen to keep the, um, I, I guess some had complained about the unsightlyness of the pump station. They're, they're going to also install a landscape.
No, what was the part, what was the comment?
The pump station is unsightly.
So, Matt prepared. It's, uh, the county pump station, right?
It's certain.
So this can be, uh, resolved, uh, by parties outside of this room, by the county, right?
No, because they're crossing city property.
They're asking for, just to be, they're asking for access to the pump station parcel across the city's property.
But that pump station parcel is still their parcel.
Yeah, we're not taking it.
Developers still own that. They're just looking for a driveway across the parcel.
They just want permission to drive through our property to get to the pump station in order to conduct the maintenance, right?
Yeah, and to be fair, Jackson LLC wouldn't be the ones going over there, it's the county guys.
It'd be the county, yes. But the, but Jackson LLC is going to maintain that access.
Yes, that's the way it's written, yes. So unless, proper area of there, unless I miss something, my calls are put.
No, you did write it, all the, all the facts. The, uh, the landscape screening is actually always supposed to be the county's responsibility, they haven't done it. So we're going to step in and do it as a part of this agreement. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you.
All right, is there a motion that we approve this?
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye. Post? All right, so move. I think we're finished. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Post? Adjourn.